Any chair?
No, I'd like to.
Well, they did hear.
No, I took the ear off.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, I'm Joe.
Brian Esslinger.
Good to meet you.
I love them. All right.
Nice to meet you.
Hey, Brian.
I've turned up, we turned up a while ago.
So, yes, you can sit here, so she's virtual.
Right here.
I got a little green.
Right, right.
Do you have our smartphone?
I actually see it. I work from home so much.
Yeah. That's not good.
Yeah, here. Now, you didn't. Yeah, you had a bill. You take it.
Wait, I was with her. I'm not with Etheridge. Why we had that?
No. What's the heck? Okay, that's right. Ah, I can't. No, I don't know.
Well, it's just what we spell it differently. Thank you, I can't say anything. You're already having a coffee. It's good to see her. It's good to meet you.
Okay, how is things?
Well, I have another two hot pink tops. How many do you have?
Well, well, very nice.
I love my hot pink tops, the ones that I'm wearing are nice to me. But I know I'm not waiting for now.
Here you go.
We have a lot of them, so. This is Tara, he's the other one. I've been trying, I've been trying to get back, actually, to Monday, I'm starting this very. I didn't have my first work job in thirteen years, I'm a little worried.
Oh, you go out.
So, excited to be busy.
Well, well, you were busy.
I was. Think you're a time. Remember, time, folks.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Where are you at? Did it fit good? Oh, yeah. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Round. This is the press section for the new year. And she was not just because of the new year, we're pretty happy to be here for the new year. Um, welcome to 2021 and, um, let's see, so I'm gonna make sure who we have. We, I know we have Claire and Joe, Tara.
If you're in the line, okay.
If you could, if you could speak into the mic, I have a hard time hearing.
I'll turn it on, how about that? Even better. And Ryan?
Which Ryan?
Oh, Ryan Esslinger. Okay, good, 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 let me make myself a note. And then Ryan Schwartz. Is he online?
No, we tried several getting a contact with him, but we'll make sure we're contracted.
Got you, got you. Got you, and then we have Ellen, Ellen Etheridge. Welcome, welcome, okay. All right, I guess that's that, we have at least six out of the seven, right? Um, the minutes, did you guys get a chance to look at the minutes? Does anyone have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from the December third meeting.
Okay.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor of the minutes of December third to 2020 to be approved? Aye, or raise your hand?
Aye.
Good, that's unanimous with those of us that are here. Okay, um, I'll tell you what. Uh-oh. I had the feeling this was gonna come. All right, so we have here the, um, oh, yes. Election of the 2020 zoning board of appeals chair person.
So, first of all.
An election of the 2020 zoning board of appeals vice chair person, right? You have a suggestion?
No, I don't have a suggestion. I'll just take it over from here.
Okay.
Until, uh, I'll take nominations for the chairman or chairperson of the zoning board of appeals.
How about, how about you go for it, Claire?
Claire's vice one.
I nominate Joe Tuttle for the chairperson.
Second.
No, no, no. I nominate Claire, she's been vice chair first. Do we have to vote now? We do?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, so all those in favor?
Yes, all those in favor of Joe being the chairman?
Aye.
Aye?
I like this. There is no way out of that. We have a vice chair.
And did you submit Claire as a nomination?
We did.
Okay, all those in favor of Claire?
As vice chair.
Or as vice chair?
Or as chair.
As chair.
As chair, right. I voted for Claire. She was previously vice chair, so.
All right, Joe, you are the new chairman.
All right, thank you.
And I will also take nominations for the vice chair.
I guess I nominate Claire again. I'll second that. All those in favor?
nominations. All right, all those in favor of Claire?
Aye.
Vote yourself.
All right, congratulations, Claire.
I love it.
If you would not mind switching places with our.
Yeah, yeah.
First of all, that, okay. All right. We did roll a call already, correct? Minutes? Unfinished business? There are, there is no one?
I think you have the preamble. Yep, I left one for you.
So let me read the preamble before we begin the meeting, formal part of the meeting. So the zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements after determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, or can it change zoning? Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with the variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance, and development and environmental ordinance. The board has no authority to grant variances for use, density, or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the Superior Court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision is rendered. First case on the docket tonight. Yes? ZBA twenty-one dash zero one. April Miller, homeowner of forty-four seventy-four Dunhaven Road, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three three eight. Request a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight, to encroach into the rear yard setback to extend and enclose the rear patio. Staff, would you please give us a briefing on this?
Yes, one second, I'm getting it up now.
Staff, I'd like to enter, there may be a final version, but there were some discrepancies in some of the item descriptions matching the actual addresses. I see, I think we see it in the second and third case, potentially not the first one. So when we get to there, we can show that, there'd be references to a prior address in the item description of the, of the new variance, so there's a couple of discrepancies there that I noticed, but we can address that as we go forward.
All right, thank you, Chairman and Board. First, we do have ZBA twenty-one oh one. And that is forty-four seventy-four Dunhaven Road. Um, this is a request to recroach into the rear yard setback by seven feet to extend their existing deck. On the map I have here, you'll see at the northern section of their existing patio, the top quarter of that does encroach into the setback as it currently exists and as it was built prior to the current homeowners having this. Um, and then if you'll look down at the proposed deck, if you'll, you'll see where the dotted line is, that's approximately where the encroachment stops into what the applicant is asking. Once you get below that, it will meet all setback requirements. So they are asking for this request based on the unique shape and the property line in the rear that is less than a ninety-degree angle. And here is an image of what they're asking. I mean, this is the image of how it currently exists. The bottom piece there is where it currently encroaches into the setback. And the top portion here where it's slightly elevated, that's where the proposed extension is gonna be. And with that, staff does recommend approval with conditions. Condition number one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated October tenth, twenty twenty. And two, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. I turn it back over to you, Chair.
Great, thanks, staff. Is the applicant in attendance and would like to speak to the board and present their case? Or virtually? Great, would you mind coming to the podium and stating your name and address, please?
My name's April Nelson.
I'm Keith Wilson.
Four four seven four Dunhaven Road.
Great. All right, the staff did a nice job of kind of outlining that, but you mind giving us a little more color behind it and what your thoughts are and why you're asking for the variance tonight?
So we're really just looking to increase the space for family use. We don't really have an extra area with kids, or if we have people over, the overflow doesn't work well. We don't really have a basement or anything like that. So we're looking to expand that first level and make the sunroom our primary living area in terms of entertainment and family time.
Okay. Great. Anyone else, virtually, wanna speak in favor of this variance?
I do have one hand raised at this time, Paula Weisar. You should be able to unmute and speak.
Yes. Can you hear us?
Can hear you.
Yes, that, that was when we originally got on because there was no video. We didn't know if we had audio at all. We are on a subsequent case, not the one you're dealing with now.
Okay. So confirming there's no other participants on the, on the Zoom that are in favor of this.
Please raise your hand. I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, excellent. Anyone here or online in opposition to variance? If not, then we will open it up to the board for questions.
That could stay.
Yeah.
You can stay, if you don't mind, because I have a question. Um, just quickly, I read, I read it. And, and I, I'm just gonna have my picture, because I think it's gonna help you guys even from afar, since you're home. So from this side here, on this part to my left, it's going to, that's what's gonna encroach a little bit more, where that's gonna go into, only about, I guess about two feet more now, right?
It'll be seven feet.
Okay, how much is it? Because some of it is encroaching already now.
Yes.
Okay. How much of it is encroaching right now?
I don't know, it's currently twelve feet, though. And we planned to.
The city could probably tell.
Hold the site plan back up so we can show you that.
Yeah.
Can you see the site plan there?
Yes.
So currently, the only encroachment they have is on the northern quarter. So at the very north section, you can see where there's a thirty-five yard line mark. Yard line, I'm sorry, that's, we're not talking football here. So thirty-five feet from there, and the setback requirement is forty. So only a portion of that northern piece encroaches currently, and they are not requesting to change any of that on the northern piece.
Got you, got you. Yeah.
So they're, they're asking to extend the elevated piece from the image there and bring that out. So, and it looks like about the top quarter of the proposed piece will also extend into the forty-foot setback. But the three-quarters below that dotted line will not encroach. And that's because of the rear property line is at an angle.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And, so it's gonna be enclosed, is that correct?
Yes.
And, but, but the city didn't, there's no, you don't need a variance for impervious surfaces, so we're, everything's good with that.
Yes.
Everybody, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, I have to get my paperwork, excuse me, that we approve the request for variance from chapter twenty-seven, section twenty-seven fifty-eight, to allow an encroachment of seven feet into the rear yard setback with the conditions presented by staff. Instruction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated October tenth, twenty twenty. If construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. And this is for ZBA twenty-one oh one.
I second.
We have a second?
I second, this is Tara Targovnik.
Thank you.
Hi.
Okay, we have a second, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Variance approved?
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Second case is ZBA twenty-one dash zero two. Susan Echterhoff, homeowner at forty-four, forty-five fifty-one Devonshire Road, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three three eight. Request a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight, to encroach into the rear yard setback by seven feet to build a new ten-by-ten patio.
Yes, and we would like to check and see if Ms. Echterhoff is online at this time.
I am promoting them to panelists now.
Okay, thank you. All right, we just wanna make sure that goes here before we proceed with it, because if they're not present, we typically withdraw.
This is James Echterhoff, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I'm gonna present the case to the board, then the board will ask you to speak when I'm done during public comment.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir. So my screen is showing something a little different than yours. We're good. All right, so we have ZBA twenty-one oh two at forty-five fifty-one Devonshire. All right, and the applicant requests a variance to encroach into the rear yard setback seven feet to add a small patio. If you look at the site plan here, the house currently sits thirty-three feet from the rear property line with a thirty-foot rear yard setback. The existing deck that is already there does encroach into the required yard setback. And from speaking with the applicant, this deck was in place prior to them purchasing it, and it was built under the authority of DeKalb County. And they're requesting the seven-yard variance to add a small patio right next to their existing patio. And the applicant has stated issues with topography at that corner, so they're gonna use this as a way to slightly step down from the patio for their children. And as you can see, this is where they're looking to put it on their lot, and they're gonna put a fence up on the proposed patio there so people can't see over into it. And on this case, staff does recommend approval with conditions. Condition one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan received on November fourteenth, twenty twenty. Two, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. And with that, I turn it over to you, Chair.
Thank you, staff. Ms. Echterhoff, would you like to talk to the board and address your case and why you're requesting the variance this evening?
Yes, absolutely, so you can't really see from the picture, but the current deck has been screened in. And from the picture, you can see there's not really any use for that, the space where we're building over. Just because there's no grass, it gets muddy there. So that was the reason we were gonna extend the deck in that direction.
Okay. Anyone else online that wants to speak in favor of this variance?
I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, anyone in opposition?
There are no hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment and open it to the board for questions.
Um, could staff put the picture up again? I didn't see a screened-in patio, I just saw a deck, so I.
So the proposal is the patio with.
Yeah, so the screen, it's, the current deck is being screened in currently.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so is something gonna go over this?
And then we're gonna add ten feet where the steps are now, that's the ten-by-ten, that's the lower, it's gonna be the step down? Is that what we're envisioning?
Yeah, so the ten-by-ten is gonna be up against the house, adjoining that. So it's gonna join the deck and go all the way to the edge of the house. So it's gonna be ten feet to the edge of the house and then ten feet out.
And the current deck that's gonna be screened, how far out does it go? Just for perspective. I just can't see it on that drawing.
I can get that exact number for you here.
Thank you.
So the existing deck appears to be fourteen feet from the property line. According to the site plan that was submitted by the applicant.
Okay, so this step down, back to your picture. So the, the current deck is that blue square. And that little red rectangle that should be, maybe it's a square, the ten-by-ten square is what they're asking, we need the variance for.
Yes, ma'am.
But it won't come out as far as the deck we're currently looking at in the picture.
No.
Okay, thank you, that was, I thought we were going to be on the deck, so that helps. Woo, thank you.
Yeah, so what's, what's, what's the topography issue? That we're alleviating?
So the applicant here is saying that there is topography there as opposed to filling that and filling in underneath their deck, they wanna put this as a step down towards the ground because there's topography there. And the other hardship that they claimed in their request was, this is a cul-de-sac lot, so the house did have to be pushed back further from where the arc of the cul-de-sac required the house to be pushed back further than a normal house within this subdivision would have to be put back. Because the front and side yard requirement for the zoning district is only five feet.
Okay. So we don't get too many ones where we ask for permissions to go lower. That's kinda like an easy one, what I did for me.
Yes. Any other questions, staff? Or, excuse me, board? Good? Kara?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'll move it.
You have a motion?
I move to approve the request for variance from chapter twenty-seven, section twenty-seven fifty-eight, to allow an encroachment of seven feet into the rear yard setback with the conditions presented by staff. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan received November fourteenth, twenty twenty. And secondly, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Do we have a second?
I second. I second.
We have a second, all those in favor of approving the application, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great.
He's made for this thing.
All right, proceeding on to item number three. It's ZBA twenty-one dash zero three. Angela and Derek Pettit, homeowners at forty-seven twenty-seven Pullman Court, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three three eight. Request a variance from chapter twenty-seven, section fifty-eight, to encroach into the rear yard setback by fifteen feet for deck repairs and an extension of the deck.
All right, thank you, and as you stated, this is ZBA case twenty-one oh three, forty-seven twenty-seven Pullman Court. The applicant requested variance to encroach into the rear yard setback by fifteen feet to repair and extend the existing deck. As you will see, this is another cul-de-sac lot where the arc did push the house back further, and it also has a very unique shape to the lot. So the house currently sets within pretty much every setback possible as it was built under DeKalb County. So they're just asking for a request to replace the deck. And then they're gonna extend it on the north side and add steps on the north side of the deck there. And then on the south side, they are gonna add more to the deck, but that will meet all setback requirements. Yeah, and if you see the dotted line that surrounds the house, that is the buildable area within all the setbacks, you can kinda see how the house sits within the buildable area there.
Mm-hmm.
And here are some images, you can see where the steps are now, they're gonna demolish the steps, build the deck out a little bit, and add new steps here. So this is where the encroachment's gonna come in and where the variance request is needed. And on this case, staff does recommend approval with conditions. Condition one being, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated October eighth, twenty twenty-two. If construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. And with that, I turn it back over to Chair, and the applicant is on Zoom tonight.
Excellent, thanks, staff. Would one of the Pettits be able to speak and address the board and say your case for why you're asking for the variance?
Hey, good evening, this is Derek Pettit, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Um, so, yeah, we'd like to extend the, the uncovered part of that deck, which is encroaching through a setback to get a little bit more space. As it currently is, it's, it's a little unstable, and we have two young girls under two. And so we're really looking to make that space a little bit bigger so that they have a safe spot outside that they can play in, and then we can add a little bit of a a nice-sized table out there, too, so we can eat dinner out there as a family. So those are kinda the main things, are just trying to get more space and just making sure it's a safe area that they can grow up with.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else online or in person that's in favor of this variance?
There are no hands raised online.
Thank you, anyone opposed? If not, we will close to the public and open up to board questions.
Question for the applicant, what's the, the safety issues that's going on?
Um, mainly the, the area where the stairs are, there's just not like a gate or anything there. So we need to make sure there's a gate so that the whole space is enclosed so that they can't just walk off the, the deck. And then if you see towards the, the kitchen door, there's kind of just three bars right there, and so a kid could easily crawl off of that. So we wanna make sure that the posts going around are such that they couldn't just crawl or walk off the deck.
Okay, so part of the deck is also deteriorating, right?
Um, slightly, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, only the, only the stairway is, is the, would be in, is part of the extension, right? So that's the, essentially.
So the northern. The northern back of the site plan. So if you see on the south side there, the extension there will actually meet all setback requirements. So there's no issue there from staff's perspective. So the northern side where the stairs are, it looks like they're going to extend the deck slightly and then make the stairs come down the side of the porch.
Yep. Okay. Great, thank you.
I can make a motion?
You may make a motion.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the request for variance from chapter 27, section 27-58 to allow an encroachment of 15 feet into the rear yard setback with the conditions presented by staff. One, that construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated October 8, 2020. And two, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Do we have a second? Second? First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to new business number four, ZBA 21-04. Stephanie and Josh Uden, homeowners at 4572 Chardonnay Court, Dunwoody, Georgia, 30338. Request two variances from chapter 27, section 58 to encroach into the rear yard setback by 10 feet to replace and cover an existing deck and to increase the lot coverage to 57%. Staff, would you run us through this for us?
All right, thank you, Chairman. And as you said, we have ZBA case 21-04, 4572 Chardonnay Court. The applicant requests to encroach in the rear yard setback by 10 feet and increase the lot coverage to 57%. The applicant's essentially asking to keep the deck within the same footprint that exists. And they want to cover the deck. They're going to rebuild the deck from the bottom up and enclose it. They are moving the stairs from the western side to the eastern side. So the only extension they're doing would be the new, the new stairs on the eastern side of the deck there. Which would not actually be within the rear yard setback, but it does slightly increase the lot coverage there slightly more than it already is. And as you can see, this is the deck as it exists today. And as I said, they're taking the stairs out and they're enclosing that portion and moving the stairs to the eastern side.
Okay.
And on this case, staff does recommend approval with conditions. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan dated November 6, 2020. Two, if construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. And with that, I turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you, staff. I have one question for staff. So the, the resulting 57% is partially because they're covering the deck or mostly because they're covering the deck? Makes it a, increases lot coverage versus the uncovered deck, correct? Is that where we're?
In this case, the lot coverage is already 57% because our definition of lot coverage does include decks. It's not technically impervious surface, but it is lot coverage pursuant to the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Typically when we put roofs or enclosed decks, that's another matter, right? Okay, great. Would one of the applicants be online or in person to be able to speak? Please come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is Josh Uden, 4572 Chardonnay Court, Dunwoody, across the street, actually. Which I'd like to thank you for making this super convenient by being across the street from my house. And I didn't realize you guys did this at night, which can't be fun for you, but is phenomenally easier for me to be here in person. So thank you very much. I don't really think I have anything to add. We're not increasing the size of the footprint. We're literally just adding a roof or moving the stairs from one side to the other. But when you redo it, it's the same size and it's the same footprint. When we had the current deck built, which is coming down, it is all but deteriorated. I think was the correct word you used on somebody else's. It's not kind of deteriorating. It is falling apart. It's a matter of time before it's a safety issue. And the reason we were told, and we in fairness were told when the gentleman builds it for us, because we had to tear down the old deck when we bought the house 15 years ago. It is the hottest place he's ever worked in his life. The sun comes up and sets on that deck with no break in the middle. So the sun is beating on it. We looked at Trex and other materials, very expensive. And we didn't do it. We built a deck and it has been battered by not just the elements, but mostly the sun. Really unfortunate thing about that is during the life of that deck, while we're waiting for it to be deteriorated by the sun, it is the hottest place on earth. So without a roof, it's somewhat unusable for a good five months of the year in Atlanta for most of the parts of the day. So we're trying to not really turn the yard into more usable space as much as we are just trying to actually use the deck we have. The roof, the way it would be built is off the side of the house, the back of the house. So it's not increasing the height of the house. It's not increasing the width of the house. It's not increasing the size of the deck. It's literally just putting a roof over the existing deck, though we will have to rebuild this deck almost exactly as it is now. And while we're doing it, we said, let's put a roof on it and now we're in this process. So I think that's, I said, if you have any questions, I guess.
Very good, thanks. Anyone else want to speak in favor of this variance? Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll close it to public comment and open it up to the board for questions.
I do have a hand raised at this time. Paula Weisshar.
Pardon me, thank you. Please speak your name and address and tell us either your opposition or support of this variance.
My name is Paula. My husband is Paul. We're both here and we have written a letter to you, which you may have there. We live directly in back, so our home, the backyards, butt each other. Do you happen to see the letter that we have written?
That's a letter in support?
I think we have one from Tulk and one from Landry.
So we did not receive this couple's email about this until after the packet was put together. So it was not included in the packet, but I can verify that it did get to the ZBA email address. So you all should have received it in your email.
We can read it to you.
Okay, please.
Paula, you want to go ahead?
Okay. My wife and I reside at 4568 Devonshire Road, which is the parcel of land that directly borders the Uden's property. That is backyard to backyard. And therefore, we will be the parties most immediately affected by their plans. We wish to oppose the granting of their two variance requests. On receipt of the notice of variance request to interested parties, we called the community development department to obtain clarification of the facts involved in the proposed construction. We were informed that the current deck complex was built with a variance to the then existing ordinances. The owners now appear to want to remove the open deck structure and replace it with a new enclosed and roofed structure, requiring additional encroachment into the rear yard and therefore requiring new additional variances. I'm sure that they feel this is well within their rights as property owners. In this particular situation, we must take exception since the realization of their wishes will detrimentally affect our enjoyment of our property and living conditions. Not to mention the resale value of our property. I also sent a photo to you also by email. I suggest that you attempt to visualize what their planned addition will do to not only our view, but to the feeling of being in our backyard. What they propose is going to essentially mean that the house is butted out more toward us in a mass manner. Their right to upgrade their property should not be accomplished at the cost of degrading hours. One might consider why the existing ordinance created and accepted standard in the first place. Further, are the granting of the repetitive variances consistent with the ordinance's original intent? Given the above, we request that the Uden's two variance requests from chapter 27, section 58 to encroach into the rear yard be denied.
Thank you. What are their, what are their names?
I, I have a question.
Sure.
The original, the, the deck that's on there now, this isn't going to change anything. Like they're not going any further than what this is at the current. Am I correct?
This is Josh Uden again. Yeah, I, I feel like maybe there's a miscommunication somewhere. As your question is correct, the answer to it is no. I'm not really sure what the issue is. We're not encroaching any further into the yard. We're not extending the footprint. I think it's maybe the way the letter was written or something along those lines more than it is an actual thing. We're not planning on encroaching, I think is the word. So I'm not really sure. And your question kind of highlights what I was thinking while I was listening to the letter. No, we're not planning on increasing or enlarging or approaching. Yeah.
So this request is based on the existing encroachment that already exists. So in the letter, we do have to word it to where they're asking for relief for an encroachment into the rear yard setback. Because it doesn't currently meet our ordinance.
Right.
I have found no evidence where there was another variance issued to them under the city of Dunwoody. And if DeKalb County had issued one, I have not found any record that was turned over to the city when we became a city for that either. So the, the letter pretty much just states he's asking for a request to enclose his existing footprint.
Right. No further extension.
So I, oh, sorry, sorry.
Yes, thank you all. Close the public comment and open up the board for questions.
Tara referenced that she got letters in support. Did everyone? I, I just checked my emails. I don't, I didn't get any letters, but I could be wrong.
I have it on the, on the city's website under the agenda.
In the package that was emailed out.
Yeah.
I got those two letters, but I did not get the third one that came in via email.
That's right.
That was just red.
Same here. But I can understand why, because the city explained that it was, it came later than after, after the packet was put together.
We received the, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it, like Paula Paula's email. I think it was Monday or Tuesday and the packet went out last Thursday. That's why it was not included in your packet.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Uden. So you're moving the stairs from one side of the deck to the other. And I'm just curious. Thank you. Now I can see you. I'm just curious what the rationale is for moving those stairs.
Sorry, can you pull back the mic? Yeah.
Very little, actually, other than when we had the deck company come out. They recommended it basically because of the slant of the yard, there's a little bit of slant to the yard. The way that we, we put a fence around it and the way the gate of the fence sat and the, it doesn't really, he said, if I was you, I would keep the exact same footprint. Shift it a little bit to the left, move the stairs on this side. It was more of a design issue than anything else.
Hello, this is Stephanie, Josh's wife. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yes, we can hear you.
The, I just wanted to add to, to what Josh said, that the side of the backyard where we're moving the steps to really is unusable space. And we're able to use, if we move it from one side to the other, there's grass and there's more of an area to play, whereas we can't really use the side anyway where we want to move the steps to.
Okay, thanks.
I got it. I have a question also. So we heard the opposition and I just, the first clarification, I think we're all in agreement now is that it's not going to be any bigger than you have it now. So it's the same footprint, so you're not encroaching a little bit more, which is, but the second part is that you're enclosing it. And I think I heard a concern that it would block their view or block them in certain way. I mean, do you anticipate that at all? I don't know where they are. Are they directly behind you or they're next to you?
So I have empathy for what they're saying, which is why I think it's largely the way the letter is written, not the actual thing that we're proposing. So before we bought this house, as a single guy, I owned a condo in Buckhead. It was my first acquisition as an adult and it was great for a year. And then they came and built another condo building directly where my building was looking into the woods. And so now I saw a parking deck. That's a serious problem and I understand that mentality really badly. Not only was it now crappy to look out the window, it really did hurt the resale value by about 30%. So I'm extraordinarily empathetic to what they're saying. In this particular case, the view, I don't know if you can see the pictures, but the view of the, what you're looking at, if you're looking at directly behind our house, is the deck unenclosed and the siding of our house. What you then see is a deck with a roof over it and the siding of our house. It's not increasing the size with height of the house itself. So you might see less siding. And if that's the view you want, I can't debate that. I'd really rather it not be the view because also some bathroom windows up there. But that's pretty much all you'd get less of. You'd see some roof, less siding. That's the change of view.
Thank you. Yeah, it's not totally, just to be confirmed, it's not totally enclosed. You're just, you're just putting a roof over it.
Yeah, we're not building a brand new part of the house, addition to the house. Our neighbors on the other side of us did do that and it's quite lovely. It's a little over our price range. This is a roof over our deck.
And it will have, it'll be screened, but you know, those are pretty much transparent anyway.
All right, thank you. Any more questions, board? Do I have a motion? There are two for this variance.
I, I have a motion.
Tara?
Now, can I read both of them at the same time?
No.
Separate, okay. Option one, approval with staff condition. I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter 27, said, the seven, section 2758 to allow an encroachment of 10 feet into the rear yard setback with the conditions presented by staff. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan received November 6, 2020. Two, if construction has not commenced within one year of granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The various number one approves. Do we have a motion for variance two?
Go Tara.
All right.
I move to approve the request for a variance from chapter 27, section 2758 to allow for an increased lot coverage maximum of 57% with the conditions presented by staff. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the site plan received November 6, 2020. If construction has not commenced within one year of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, both variances pass. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, moving on. That's the net of our cases this evening. We, are there any other business that anyone would like to bring up? Any public comment? So there's no other business or public comment? Is there any board comment?
I just, when we broke last in December, we knew that Bill McCann was not continuing on at the board. We did not know that Richard and Bob were not. So I'd just like to, Bob Hoskins, I'd just like to publicly say thank you for your service to the board. We're all volunteers, those of you listening out in Zoom land. We, I think we all like serving our city this way and they certainly did a great job. And we just didn't have a chance to say, say that publicly last month. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. No other board comment? My motion adjourned.
And I just, this can be off the record. I would like to, Ryan, that's.
Of course.
Ryan Schwartz. We've had trouble getting in contact with him, but we'll make sure everything's clear with his email address after that. We also do have a new deputy director, Mr. Paul Leonhardt. And I do believe our two other planners are on Zoom, Grace and Allegra. Grace has already joined us here.
Hi, everyone.
And Allegra is in Boston in about a week and a half.
Nice.
For you guys to meet.
Welcome.
Welcome, Grace.
Thank you.
Welcome, Alan and Ryan.
Yes.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Thank you.